Do you lead us in the pledge, Larry?
Yeah.
And would you offer invocation, Ted? We'll wait for a few minutes for...
Well, we've got three. We've got seven.
Yeah.
You want me to go ahead with the pledge? Or is that at the beginning of...
Let's wait a minute or two.
Okay.
He doesn't show in a couple, we'll go ahead.
So I did, I just did Saratoga, I did Orem, and I did Vineyard. Since Vineyard was the newest one. It also talked about mailboxes, not that we have to worry about mailboxes.
Did you find some cities that didn't have an ordinance dealing with that?
I did, the last page kind of covered everything. Which, and, and some cities do, and some cities don't. And some it's an ordinance, and some it's just a request.
Oh.
And then talks about liability and those types of things.
Yeah, okay. Severance here, we can start.
Okay, please stand for the pledge of allegiance. Please repeat with me. I pledge allegiance to the God of the United States of America, and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, Larry, thank you Ted, appreciate that. We don't have anybody here for our public comment. We will move on to the business.
Hey Wayne?
Yes?
Could you just make sure everybody's mics are on?
Sure.
Thank you.
Thank you. Oftentimes we don't have them on when we're not speaking, but whatever works. So, good. I sent the draft minutes out, I had to go back and listen to our meeting because I neglected to take a couple of notes on who made motions things on the last meeting, but they were in the, in the YouTube video, so I got that information. Sent it out to everybody, I didn't get any... Well, I got one feedback, I think, from you Severn on a correction that was made, and went ahead and made it, so.
Yeah, I read through them and didn't...
Take a motion on, on the approval of the minutes for October 20 meeting.
Second.
Okay. All in favor, approval of minutes? Aye. No opposed. I get, did I get an aye from you, Lori? Okay. Very good.
I got a million clocks here in my house, and so I keep on muting myself so you don't hear them all, but
Okay.
if they get obnoxious, let me know and I'll mute.
All right, very good.
Wonder if we're gonna need, need to ask David to turn his camera off because that blanket's really hurting my eyes.
I like it.
That didn't hurt.
I want one.
That's painful, John will agree with...
It was painful for my brother last night.
That's the wrong color, it should be red.
No, better dead than red.
Next item on the agenda is the fencing ordinance. As this was reviewed by the city council, they ask us to reconsider. They may be fine tuning this a bit. Some of the concerns that they raised were, had to do with the wildlife corridor that potentially this would interfere with wildlife corridors in the city. There was a public, or there was a comment made by an individual who was in attendance at the city council meeting. Where he suggested that we further limit the kinds of material used in fencing to better blend in with with woodland hills. Particularly these white vinyl fences. He felt that we ought to reconsider and not not allow those to be used. So those were a couple of comments that were made. But a lot of, a lot of talk about the deer and the wildlife corridor. Potentially, the kind of fence that we're looking at here would inhibit wildlife traveling from one piece of property to another. So, anyway, they asked us to take a look at it again. Corbett brought up an issue as well, just to me after the meeting. These electrical boxes that go oftentimes, sometimes, sometimes they end up in the front of a person's yard, but oftentimes they're in the city right of way. He said, when they have problems with those, he said they need at least 12 feet around them. They have a pole that goes in to disconnect things. And so he says, if you have a fence right up against those, possibly that would present a problem for SESD to make electrical repairs.
Is that 12 feet all the way around, or they just need 12 feet from one of the sides?
No, because you never know where, how they're gonna enter, enter that box. He implied 12 feet all the way around for clearance.
Well, the only concern I have is that very often, especially up on this there are trees within 12 feet that are naturally there.
Yeah, but usually a tree you can poke around with the end of the pole and get, get around that. So, anyway, he, he, he mentioned that.
Are the boxes... Oh, go ahead. Well, are the boxes only in the front yards, or are they in the backyard sometimes?
They're usually in all in the front yard. Or in the, on the road or in the front yard.
Typically, they try to put them on a property line if they can. And I've seen sometimes in cities though, where they'll put them kind of on a property line, but then they'll, they'll actually put a little fence around them. And then, so they're accessing from one side, but that's why I was curious if he's thinking all the way around, or if it's one side. I've seen him put little fences around them. So they're only a couple feet, and then the one side's of course clear all the way, but I, but it's 12 feet all the way, certainly something we gotta think about if that's SESD's requirement.
With... Well, I I have a proposal that would address that, if that's something we want to adopt. And that would be... Maybe?
I, we didn't hear you, Wayne.
But, what I've, go ahead.
I just said that there are probably other communities that have fences right next to these boxes. So they can access from the roadway side. And I think a lot of those communities have overhead power lines, not underground like ours.
Yeah. One thought I had was to limit the fencing from the plane, the front plane of the home back. So the front yards would be, would not have, would not allow fences. At least, that way, there would be from the street, an appearance of just an openness along the front of the street. If we limited the fence to be the front plane of the house, now oftentimes that would be the setback. Whether it's 30 feet or 50 feet, or we could establish a, a foot setback if we wanted to do that, or just make it equal to whatever the, the front setback is, so that the fence would not come forward from that front setback. It would give a little bit more of a transit. If people are concerned about wildlife corridor, it wouldn't allow a complete yard to be fenced off. The front would be open. So that's one thought that I had that we might consider in making a restriction. Another, I, I can see the one suggestion that was made with this white vinyl. I can see where that kind of takes away from the community a little bit. One, this same person who made that suggestion talked about a wood look, whether it was actual wood, or trekk, or some other kind of composite material that looked more wood, looked like wood, rather than a white, white vinyl fence around the yard.
You know, I, and I understand that for the upper part of woodland hills and for Summit. Where we've got a lot of vegetation. Trebo, mountain maples, and so on. But down there, in our R119, down in Four Seasons, which is the only place right now, we're talking about. There are no fences. Unless somebody puts one in. You know, when they're landscaping. And I just, I don't have that much of a problem with the white vinyl fence. I mean, you can get brown vinyl too, I've seen brown vinyl, I've seen gray vinyl. You know, the same...
Glenn did a little bit more.
Yeah. And I don't really have that much of a problem with white vinyl.
Yeah, we really got two parts to the community, almost like everything above, I agree, everything above is just kind of different than that, the little developments around the church, plus whatever future developments may happen down in that area where it's a little more smaller lots. People want a little more privacy because they don't have the trees. And so, as far as the, the white vinyl, I don't, I don't know in that area that I'd have that. As, as far as that restriction now, that animal corridor thing, that's, that's probably a different thought, and how does, how do we address that? That's not a bad thought.
I mean, the wildlife corridors, if you look at that area down there that we're looking at right now, there is a natural wildlife corridor that goes to the northeast of where the church is. There's a natural channel that rings up and goes up the hill. There's another one that comes down the back of Summit. You know, behind the, the houses that are built on the northeast side of Summit. The natural corridor that, that empties out just below the gate onto where the roadway is. And so there are already natural corridors for wildlife to be able to move off the mountain down into the lowlands. And if, and if we restrict your suggestion from the plane of the house backwards, then you've also got the whole front yards that, that can be a wildlife corridor. When we're talking about wildlife, are we mainly talking about the deer, or are we talking about the turkeys, or?
Primarily the deer, I think the turkeys are more localized in different areas of the city. So I think it's primarily the, the deer that...
Because I mean, a six-foot fence doesn't, I mean, maybe the fawns, but yeah, if population, they don't care. A six-foot fence?
Yeah.
Bear, I'll just go right through it anyways.
Well, as I got thinking about it, I mean, that, that is a part of an answer, but I I would like to see an openness in the front, front yards of homes, rather than a fence coming all the way down and completely enclosing it.
I agree with that, I think keeping fences out of the front to give it more open feel, I do like that.
Up here?
I know, well...
Split rails.
But they're, they're open.
Yeah, they are.
Yeah.
I like the idea of the front yards open, I think that gives enough of a corridor for wildlife. I wonder if maybe as the lots are the, the future lots are plotted, we might want to consider any places where a walking trail might cut through from one section to another section, and that would be open. But, and I, I also think that white vinyl could match some homes that have white trim, and that might possibly be okay, plus it's in the backyard. It's not out in front, and I kind of think we should allow those.
Yeah, I think we gotta give them some sort of privacy down in those lots, those smaller lots, I mean, can't take away too much of their ability to have some privacy. I mean, up here, we've got it with trees and stuff, but I think they gotta be able to have some privacy. And I, personally, I like white vinyl better than I do the brown vinyl anyway, but I think it looks cleaner, newer, but that's a personal thing, I mean, but or the ivory, or, yeah, so should we make them do camouflage, then it just kind of blends in? But I don't know that we want to get so far restrictive that we're saying you can only do this, I mean, I don't, I don't know. It's kind of that balance between people's personal property rights of giving them freedoms to be able to have privacy and still look nice, but not restrict them so much that, you know, you outprice what they can do.
Yeah.
I remember that there was a, a comment made in a last city council about having a masonry fence along 11200 for the houses that are along 11200. May I remind everyone that in our current fencing ordinances, you can't have a masonry fence except for pillars. And so you can't have a solid masonry fence, so if if the city council wants to put have that option, we're gonna have to change the rest of the fencing ordinance as well.
Can't you have a, a masonry fence up, I don't know, three feet or so, and then have a open...
It doesn't say that, all it says is a pillar. You can have a masonry pillar, but you can't have a solid masonry fence. I don't think, I don't remember an exception for a low-level masonry fence. But a low-level masonry fence is not gonna block the sound from 11200.
No.
Which is what they were talking about.
Yeah. And most of those aren't, they're not gonna be front yards there on 11200, it's gonna be side or back yard. So.
Personally, I'd like to see it all open, but, you know, I don't want to get you gotta give people the chance in those smaller open areas to have some privacy and something they can, they can build and be, be affordable.
John, any thoughts you have?
A couple. Somebody's backyard on a corner lot's gonna be somebody's front yard on a perpendicular house behind them, so as you're talking, front yards, backyards on fencing, keep that in mind. And I'm not a fan of white. That's all.
Okay.
I like cedar fencing, but I hate staining it, so if they did cedar fencing, that'd be sweet, it'd be just the maintenance on that stuff, that's what I had in our first house, it's terrible.
Another, as I went through this, another thought that I had is we're allowing fence on the property line, which we're disregarding setbacks. Utility setbacks.
Actually does say five feet off the property line.
But this one will take the place in this zone of that, so do we, do we want to add that as a criteria, that it can't be along the property line, it has to be five feet off the property line to accommodate the easements? Otherwise...
I've ever seen that before in a city.
Yeah, I think that would look odd to have a 10-foot strip between all the houses' backyards.
Yeah, I've always, ever, all the cities I've lived in, we've always put them right on the property line, our fences. Every, I've been, the three I've, I've built fences on, it's always been around the property line. And if the city has to get in there, they can remove and replace the fence, but I, because then Lori's right, then you're taking away that space from, use from the people. When in reality, it's their property, even though there's a city easement, it's still their property, they've just given the city the right to do certain things in it.
I know...
So they're basically paying for property they can't use.
When we moved from Texas, there was, it was quite common for two neighbors to get together and, and put a fence on the property line and share share the cost for it.
So we did in three of our houses, that's what we did.
So.
I mean, when I lived out in southern Arizona, the builder put up concrete block wall all the way, you know, on the backyard.
On the property line.
On the property line, so, you know, it was shared between the two neighbors, basically.
Yep.
I just don't know that, that you can, I don't know, is there any legalities associated with that, because now you've told them that basically they got a fence five feet, five feet inside their property because of an easement. When, when they own that property, right? That's, they're paying property taxes on that five feet, even though the city has an easement, because that's their property.
They're not supposed to block the easement off.
Right.
Either, so.
I know, we did the same thing down our...
We know we've got easements in the front, are there easements on each side and the back?
Yeah.
Yeah. But same thing we had in West Jordan when I was, or Saratoga, when I was there, we had easements down the side lotlines, but you know, we still all put our fences on the property line. I mean, it's a, it's a bugger for the city, because if for some reason they need that easement. Unless, as I've seen where there've been drainage easements, where the city has to put a drainage through some properties, and so then, because they have to build a drainage channel, fences have to be set back, but...
One of the issues too, if you put a fence in, now, two neigh, two neighbors do that, and they've got a 10-foot wide grass that's growing, dead grass, weeds, potentially...
Yeah, who maintains it?
...to fire to safety issue as well, that's not going to be attended.
Yeah.
Really, so.
That's a good point.
Anyway, just something we need to be aware of as we...
All of our properties will have easements, correct?
No, they do. Yeah.
If you look at the plat, the plat will have it on there, if you look at your plat, it'll show on the plat that and we do this, like, in the engineering world, we do this all the time, right? We go get easements for pipelines through private properties all the time. And part of that is, is we as whoever we're representing, whether it be a water district or whatever, we have to remove the fence, put the pipeline, and put the fence back.
What Ted's saying is pretty much the norm anywhere I've ever built or lived.
Yeah.
Is you put the fence on the property line, there are easements, and if they have to access it, they pull it out, do their thing, and put it back, so.
Just, because that's the, that's the property owner's property, really, I mean, yeah.
They bought it with that easement in place, and...
I mean, the easement doesn't give that property to the city. It just allows them access.
Correct.
Yep.
I don't see anything wrong with allowing, but especially where those lots are really, well, so much smaller than our R119, to allow it on the property line. I mean, where you've got three quarters of an acre or two acres, or an acre, that's a totally different situation, you know?
Well, and to Wayne's point too, I like, I mean, if you have two fence lines set back five feet either side, now you got a 10-foot strip, and you're gonna tell the property owner now, okay, you gotta go maintain, you know, do whatever, plant it, maintain it, all that, so he's got a, outside his fenced area, he's maintaining property. I could see some arguments coming up with that one.
Well, maybe we need to change the other part of the fencing ordinance to allow putting fences on property lines. But the way it reads now, with not the R119, but the other, you can't enclose a whole lawn. You can put sections up, here and there, but as I remember, you can't enclose...
Yeah, I think it's a 60% closure. The rest has to be some open.
60% sounds right to me.
Yeah, it's what I recollect, but... Lenny, any further thoughts on what we would want to to do to restructure this?
Well, I like your idea of saying the front plane of the house, you can't really go beyond that.
Leave the color schemes the way they are, leave them open. Would it, would there be any justification to say, put a preference in there for for materials or color, not make it mandatory? Is there any point in, in doing that?
I mean, we basically restricted vinyl coated chain link. We restricted slats and chain...
We've restricted chain link, period. Any chain link, vinyl or otherwise.
But not up here.
Correct. Up here, you can do co, vinyl coated chain link.
Not vinyl coated. You can put chain link, but not vinyl.
Not vinyl?
No. I, I didn't, I understand, but...
There is an exception for sports court, correct?
That's right, there is. And you can go
Yeah.
12 feet for a sports court.
Okay.
Yes, swimming pools, at least 48, I think.
Yeah, 48 inches. So. Anything else that you think we ought to consider? From a modification standpoint, or even the way it is? Except for the, possibly the front plane. Put that.
And I, and I really do think with the front plane that we open up, that helps us to open up a wildlife corridor. And especially down there in Four Seasons, as I said. You've got a natural one on the northeast side of Four Seasons, you've got one that comes out of below Summit, above Four Seasons, into what would be the front yard areas in the road of Summit Creek. But you've still got a wildlife, you have a lot of off where they have help anything, although there is space up in Summit that has wired fencing around it. That doesn't stop the deer. They just jump right over.
Do we have any ordinance that, on a corner lot, if you're doing fencing a side yard, you have to stop so far back?
Now, now this addresses that, the safety issue.
Because you have a sight distance, yeah.
And they can't interfere with, with visuals.
Sight distance, yeah.
Yeah. So.
Wayne, does, does Robert Nielsen or any of those people down there have any feedback on this at all?
You know, we haven't. I gave a copy of this to Robert several months ago and, uh. He hasn't commented one way or another. I think if he'd strong objections, he'd have said something. So.
I mean, he's the one that read.
Right, yeah.
That they will be able to fix the backyards.
And primarily it was a privacy issue that he, that he brought up. They, Dave shared with me a story that when they lived in Orem, they, they had a. They had a neighbor who would come out and bathe or sunbathe in the nude and everybody who had a second story, uh, visual could see that. So, so much for privacy.
Yep.
Was that you, Dave?
It's also uncertain Saturday afternoons, everyone was up on the second floor of their house, huh?
No, it was actually my elder's core presidents had the two story house. And he got up there and he saw his neighbor and immediately was like, ah! So he told his kids that they could not open up that blind.
Um, well, does somebody want to make a motion then on the adding this, um. Plane, front plane, that fence can't come forward from the front, front plane of the home, whether it's 30 feet, 50 feet, whatever it is. It can't come past the front plane. If that's what we want. I, I like that idea myself. Okay, I'll entertain a motion.
Write some bridge for that, Wayne.
Ye- yes, and this, now, we've had a public hearing, so it doesn't need to go to a public hearing anymore.
Right.
It'll just be adding the recommendation then for that, uh, to the, uh, to the city council. And I can, I can put verbiage together and send it around to everybody.
Okay, I approve, we approve the fencing ordinance as written with the addition of that the fence cannot go beyond the front plane of the house.
Okay. Sounds like good words to use.
So just clarification, that means the side fences, side yard fences as well, right? They can't come up past the front plane. So they can basically close in their backyard.
Yes. Okay, have a motion from Severin. Is there a second?
Second.
Okay. Second from Ted. All in favor?
Aye.
Okay, none opposed. Very well. We'll add that and get it back to the city council. Um, next item on the agenda is, um. Report from Larry on, uh, snow and the sidewalk.
I just gave you copies of the ordinances for. Three communities. Saratoga Springs, Vineyard and Orem. Uh, I didn't include Salem because Salem has four or five pages of the ordinance regarding sidewalks. Because they talk about, uh, three or four or five different sections of the city, each one having a separate, separate ordinance that applied. Depending on whether your frontage was 150 feet or 200 or feet or more than 200. Whether or not adjacent properties had sidewalks or didn't have sidewalks, whether it was new construction, whether it was reconstruction. So I didn't even go there. But I brought these three. Saratoga Springs says that owners are responsible for keeping all sidewalks along their property free from snow and ice. Also a comment there about fire hydrants, keeping those free from snow. The Orem regulation says. Owners, occupants, tenants, leases, all real property shall keep the public sidewalks, curbs and gutters, abutting the property free from, abutting the property free from debris, dirt, rocks. Weeds, snow and ice. And Vineyard just says that clearing snow from sidewalks in front of their homes. Within 24 hours of a storm is the homeowner's responsibility. And then they also have a note there about snowplow accumulated in driveway approaches. That's still city right of way and, uh, the owner is responsible for that, even though it may be difficult. And then I like that the addendum there that in Vineyard, it says, if possible, please assist the elderly and infirm neighbors. So that pretty well covers it. There are some communities that do not actually require that, but expected. I didn't delineate which ones those were. The final page there talks about shoveling sidewalks in the state of Utah and a general summary of, of Utah policy. The state defers everything to the counties and the cities.
Okay.
And Salt Lake has a requirement, 24 hours to remove the, the snow.
What do y'all think of the time period? I think that's a good thing to include.
I'm on the fence. What if you're out of town? Is that? When the snowstorm comes, you're gone for a week, which is what I hope I am, but. Do you get like now a ticket or something, or you get your violation of the code because you're out of town, you can't clear your sidewalk? That'd be my only concern.
Yeah.
I like the idea of having it cleared as soon as you can, but. But would you be violating a code and get in trouble if you're gone for a week and your sidewalk doesn't get cleared?
When I'm gone, I don't have, we don't have sidewalks, but we do have, uh, a windrow left of snow when the plows go by. And so if I'm going to be gone, I just have a neighbor boy, 14 year old boy that is kind of on call and if there's snow, he cleans that off my. Driveway doesn't, and, and he will clean the driveway if I, and I suggest, oh, leave it alone. But he usually just cleans it as part of that situation.
You know, we have a few homes that people don't live in year round and I think if their driveway is full of snow, that's okay. They're gone. Don't know that we should penalize them or have a law. About them required, being required to keep it clear.
And we're talking, when we're talking sidewalks, we're just talking down in the R119, right?
Right.
It's really the only place we have sidewalks.
I don't think we're worried about driveways. I think it's mostly sidewalks.
Yeah, yeah, mostly just sidewalks. I don't think we include driveways. Those driveways are not a public thoroughfare. So we're really just talking down there. And I agree with, and that, so the three cities I've had houses in, that's always been the requirement or codes. We had to clear the sidewalk in front of our house. It was our responsibility. The 24 hour thing. That's the only one I would.
Yeah, yeah.
I'd wonder about, but.
I think if you don't have a timeframe and someone is not clearing their sidewalk, you can still go to them and say, you need to keep this cleared. Um, I don't know that we have to have a timeframe on it.
Yeah, I think it just creates added problems if we put a timeframe in it.
Well, then you have to enforce it. Salt Lake, Salt Lake City does have a timeframe, Vineyard does, Orem does not, Saratoga does not, Salem does not. Elk Creek does not, Payson does not. I can't remember on Springfield, Spanish Fork.
These are the actual ordinance wording that they've done, okay? Very good. Well, I think there's enough information here for us to, to look at and, and craft something that, uh. That would work. We will, this again, this will need to go as for a public hearing. We've got a couple of things. Pardon?
Is it land use?
Yeah, it's a good question. We'll have to look and see.
Putting the sidewalks there.
Yeah. Clearing the snow.
Clearing the sidewalk.
Most of these ordinances are under. Part 10. Saratoga Springs, it's their section. Or section 16.
What are, what are those sections? What are they?
Most of those sections are under streets.
Okay.
It says streets and sidewalks or.
Maintenance kind of things.
Yeah.
Okay. So it may not be anything with zoning then that we'd have in public hearing? Let me do this. Let me craft something and send it around to everybody for some suggested wording and we can look that over, uh. Maybe in our December meeting then and see if that meets what we would like to have it say and. I'll go from there then.
Like I said, Saratoga Springs, it's just one sentence. Property owners are responsible for keeping all sidewalks along their property free of snow and ice. Now, they do have another section that says they also have to clean, uh, any trees overhanging the sidewalks or streets. They also have a separate section that talks about any debris or weeds similar to the one was, was it, was it Vineyard or Orem? It said, uh. No, it's Orem. Shall keep the public sidewalks, curbs, gutters free from any debris, dirt, rocks, weeds, snow and ice. So it covers all of those areas.
I know, uh, Ted or John, do you know if our city ordinances deal with the fire hydrants or is that just something that the city encourages the residents to do?
There is nothing in the ordinance.
There, there is some verbiage.
Well.
That's ordinance driven then.
Yeah. In fact, uh, I saw, did Jody put that on the, or our most recent city newsletter that just came out this week?
Yeah.
It's on there. It has it on there, the requirements and the ordinances are referred to in there.
Okay. All right. So that's covered already then.
That should be covered, uh, and it was attached in that newsletter this week as a reminder to all of the residents.
I saw that too. I just didn't know if it was ordered, couldn't remember.
I, I think it had the ordinances attached to the, to the comments on it.
Okay. All right. Good. Well, thanks Larry for.
You're welcome.
Your research and getting that information. So. Next item, John, on the city code and CCNRs and so forth.
Um, I'm still working on it, so I prefer not to say anything yet. Due to what this is, as a general rule, most cities do not enforce HOA CCNRs. But I will have more pertinent information for our next meeting.
Okay. Very good. Thank you. Or any CCNRs.
Right.
Correct. Yeah. But John brought up that there, there are some nuances maybe with different cities and how they've addressed those. And so. We're just interested in knowing what that was and how that interacted, related with, with CCNR enforcement. So.
Yeah, there's the code for the fire hydrant, 54-2.
What's, what's it in?
Ordinance 54-2.
And five.
And they have to keep it, uh, clear for three feet around the hydrant of a height of four inches or less. And snow shall be removed to a depth of eight inches.
Okay.
Debris is four inches. I think snow is eight inches. Anyway.
Robert. Did, did you, we don't have anything on our agenda from you. Was there something that you. Called you here and then? Okay. All right. We, uh, did you, it was asked earlier too, we're looking at a fencing ordinance. I sent you a copy. Uh, of what was proposed. The city council sent it back for us to give some more consideration to and what we've agreed to tonight. Were you, were you here when they're talking about fencing or did you come after? What we, uh, yeah, what we're going to make a further proposal. Is that fencing not be allowed in front of the plane of the front of the house? So the front yard would not be fenced in, but the, the side or the backyard can be. The front, as long as there's no vision impairment on the side or the street. In other words, they probably would not be able to put up a solid fence. On the street side if it impaired their vision. Yes.
But they can't go past the front plane of the house. So even if you're on a corner and your front's facing one direction, your fence can come around to the front plane and it has to tie back to the house.
Tie back into the side of the house.
Can't, can't take fencing past the front plane of the corner, which I think is going to take care of by itself, that sight distance.
Why it does because a corner lot, the side setback and the front setback are equal.
Right. I think it's going to take care of the sight.
Whatever the setback, whatever the house is setback, that would be the maximum that a fence could come forward. Yeah. One of, one of concerns was to try to preserve as much as possible wildlife corridors. Throughout the city. And so if we give that a corridor area on the front, then. We partly accomplished to keep, keep those open. I mean, deer are going to jump, you know, a six foot fence anyway, but. They're lazy like other wildlife and they'll go around if they can, but, uh. Anyway, that's, that's what, that's what we're going to be proposing to the city council. Yeah, I, I think they're going to be limited their backyard for dogs.
Hey, Wayne?
Yes.
We can't hear those comments that are being made. So you're having a dialogue that's only halfway being recorded.
Okay, gotcha.
Mic right here.
But, yeah, Robert, why don't you come on up? So share with us what comments, what feedback you've gotten from your residents there.
A lot of the people that's purchasing lots here would like to be able to fence off their front yard too. Uh, a lot of the ordinances in some of the cities require a six foot fence, but when you come within 30 foot of the intersection, then it has to drop down to a 36 inch fence. Or something that you can see through. Uh, I know they'd like to enclose their lots a little bit more than just the back of it. So that's kind of what I'd like to see them, that they could consider something like that. So that's kind of what I'd like to see them, that they could consider something like that. We have one home that sits back probably, that sits back 30 foot on the front, but on the side adjacent to the corner lot, he's probably back probably 70 or 80 feet. So I know he'd like to fence some of that off.
Well, he'll be able to as long as the fence does not come forward from the front plane. So he could fence that whole side off as long as there's not an interference safety-wise with traffic if he's on a corner lot.
So if he set back 30 foot on the front, he can go straight across over to the corner from that 30-foot set fence?
Yes.
But when he gets to the corner, he has to cut it short 30 foot also or can he go to the property or to the road or to his easement on the road?
I think he can go all the way to your property line.
Yeah, it's going to depend on the visual.
Okay.
Because we don't want a fence that's going to impair somebody looking at the traffic coming down the road.
Where we have a few lots there that are kind of small, I can understand that, but with some of these bigger lots, could we maybe have something in there that would let us review them on different lots and see if it'd be possible to maybe fence a little bit more of the front yard in that way? Because he's going to have a section there on the front that's, that I'm sure he's going to want to fence off.
When you talk about fencing in the front, do you mean fencing in the whole front, like all the way to the street or just kind of putting a dividing line between one neighbor and the next so that you know where to stop mowing?
Well, we definitely want to have it between the neighbors, but I think what he wants to do, or some of them that's entertaining the notion of putting a fence in, that they want to come from the front corner of their house that's on the corner of the lot and come straight forward to the front edge and then go around the property on the front around the corner, maybe with a rail fence so they could at least have that much more property fenced in.
But it wouldn't be, like deer could walk in, right? I mean, from the street, it would be open?
That's what they want to do is keep the deer from going into their yard.
Yeah, me too.
That's not going to happen.
But what we're trying to propose for this particular home is that they would have a rail fence and then the vision of it would be, between the neighbors would be between the bushes, it'd be the bushes that give them the privacy, but there'd be a rail fence that's there. And then they'd keep the rail fence coming around the corner and then come back into the, I can't explain it. You'd come around the corner, then to the front corner of their house and right back into their corner.
I was going to say, we don't have a sharpie in here, we can draw it.
Well, if I draw something, it's going to be even worse.
We're, what we're faced with too is establishing a guideline that's universal and
I understand.
And not, you know, for one.
You definitely have a different situation here than most cities.
Yeah, we do. And we like the openness of the front so that there's no, as we've talked about it here before you came, it still gives that openness feeling to the environment, to the area here, but yet allows those who want to to do some fencing in their back and on the side yards. I can see what you're saying with an open fence in the front.
Well, you need to do what you can and I'll just present it to him and see what he says. Maybe he's okay with it.
You know, we do have some huge herds of deer and elk that run through there that if everything is closed and they're just on the street, you know, only, I mean, we do need to allow for them to move through because they do.
Yeah, I understand.
But I'd like to keep them out of my yard too.
If somebody's worried about deer in their yard, they're moving to the wrong place.
Ask me if you grow a garden, I says, yeah, I just build it enough that the deer will share with you.
Yeah. We had a four-point sleeping on our back patio yesterday.
Yeah?
Yeah. I like it. I think it's cool.
I don't think they mind that, I think they're here for the deer also, they enjoy having the deer around, but they just want an area that they can't get in so that they can protect, you know, their backyard especially. So they may be okay with it that way. I'll present it to them and see what they say.
Now, you know, a person can have, we're talking about perimeter fences.
Yes.
So in the backyard, people can build taller fences for gardens and they want to enclose a playground or something like that, that's available to them on an interior fence.
Is it to where they can put the fence on the property line now?
It is, that's what we're proposing, yeah.
Well, not the ones that close your garden.
No, that, we're talking about a perimeter fence.
A perimeter fence.
Can go on the property line.
I know you have an easement there for the lives, wildlife.
Yeah, we're.
But if we can do away with that in this area, that's what I was wondering.
Yeah, we're doing away with that because of the smaller homes.
Yeah.
The other issue is that if you have five foot on one side, five foot on the other, then you've got a 10-foot strip that's not going to get any attention.
Yeah.
Grass is going to grow, dead grass, et cetera.
I don't think you get grass to grow as much as you do the weeds.
Yeah, well, that too. The point is it's dry and a fire hazard becomes a potential fire hazard, so.
Well, we appreciate you looking at it because I knew it was kind of a concern for that area, that zoning.
Okay. Thank you. Let's go on to the next item. I gave everybody a handout here for a couple of changes in 10-4-5 and it primarily has to do with better identifying the, the work that's done on a site plan. Right now, it says Planning Commission and it's members of the Planning Commission, it's not the whole Planning Commission. So under 1045, the first little paragraph there currently reads, "In addition to drawings required by the provision of the building code, application for a building permit shall be accompanied by," and then it lists things. What we'd like to have you all consider is for that paragraph to read to start out, "Building permit applications will be reviewed for approval by the building inspector and assigned planning commission members. Then, in addition to drawings required by the provisions of the building code, applications for a building permit shall be accompanied by." So it's inserting that one sentence that's in bold at the beginning of that paragraph and it's just a short paragraph, that's all it says, but it, right now, there's nothing in there that says specifically to this that the Planning Commission reviews building permits. And it's a combination of, right now, I've been using Severin and John and myself rotate around and Corbett also reviews those then for structural issues. We look at the site plan. So we wanted to clarify that and we would, that would be clarified in that, this ordinance. And then Part D of that, same 10-4-5, it currently states, "Each final site plan submitted shall contain the following information unless specifically waived by the Planning Commission in whole or in part." What we changed that to, saying each final site plan submitted shall contain the following information unless specifically waived by the building inspector and other approving official in whole or in part. That would be the Planning Commission person or persons who are sitting on that review. There was concern expressed when the codification was being done that if, there was a feeling that more than one person ought to be involved in being able to waive one of the requirements of the site plan. So that's what was discussed and it was never put into place during the codification process. So we're adding that now, so both the building inspector and the approving officials have to both agree to eliminate some requirement that might be there for some good reason. So that's what those two pertain to and that would be something that we would have a public hearing on because we're changing the review process for a building permit.
Would the other approving official be anyone other than a Planning Commission member?
No. Other than the building inspector and then.
Would we want to just say Planning Commission member?
Well.
Because that's what we've set up here to be consistent.
Yeah, and we, we put that in there potentially to address when, if there is an issue and Planning Commission member's not around. We've got enough of us now that we can, so we could, we could put in there Planning Commission member instead of other approving official.
I would, I'd rather say Planning Commission member or other approving official as designated by the city or something like that, or just say Planning Commission member.
Other city designated approving.
Someone that the city has specifically said you are an approving official.
Yes.
Or if it's just going to be a Planning Commission member like we stayed above, then maybe it's just change it to a Planning Commission member.
Unless specifically waived by the building inspector, comma, Planning Commission member, or other city approving official.
Designated city approving, so someone the city has designated to be an approving official. Because it may not be a city official, right? It could be, what if they designate, say, they hire an engineer to be their designated approving official, but as long as they have been appointed or designated by the city.
So that would read again, "Each final site plan submitted shall contain the following information unless waived by the building inspector, the Planning Commission member, or other city designated approving official in whole or in part." So any comments about that? Anybody?
I think it's good.
Okay. Well, I don't know if we'll have a public hearing in December or not, we will see, but next, next one we have, we'll include those in the public hearing. That'd be a good idea, Laurie, do that, or whoever would like to make a motion. Okay, is there a second?
I'll second it.
Okay. All in favor? Thumbs up, Laurie?
Yeah, I couldn't really hear, but.
Oh. You know what we're, the words, oh, you don't, I'll give you a copy of this.
Okay.
I have one here for you and you too, John, just so that you've got it.
We were just approving you, Lloyd, who is a designated treat provider at each Planning Commission meeting.
I like treats.
The last item on the agenda is a, is a recommendation that Roberts, Robert Nelson is making to annex a piece of property that he owns as well as a couple of surrounding The city is providing water to those lots now. They're down adjacent to Robert's Four Seasons, they're on the Lofer Canyon side of, of the, of the, yeah, the property there.
Providing water to two of the homes that's there right now?
Yes. And there's what, there's three homes there?
There's three.
So eventually we may provide it to the other one, but right now it's two. So that's, Robert has written letters to the concerned parties and they've been notified of the request. There's a little concern that's been expressed by Elk.
Elk Ridge.
Elk Ridge. They're county properties right now, so.
Where are these at up the canyon?
They're right down.
You're going to have to say that into a microphone.
Is that green there, Robert?
Yes, it is. The property belongs, there's five acres that's Noel Hyatt, five that's Corey Hyatt's, five that's Mike Griffiths, and I had five. Nadine Robbins didn't want to come in at this time.
Is that these lots right here? Just right by, right there in the white? These homes here, or these lots here?
Originally, when we started doing this back in 2006, we, Nadine was going to come in together and we was going to annex some of it to Elk Ridge and some to Woodland Hills and make it so that the roadway would work for everything. But Nadine doesn't want to go in right now, so it kind of makes it so that Mike and Corey Hyatt and, or Mike Griffiths, Corey Hyatt and Noel can come in. Noel really doesn't want to come in, but we was afraid that the county would turn it away for sure if he didn't. The reason this all got started is because Corey Hyatt wants to sell his home and he doesn't have a legal lot there the way it's been sold to him as far as a five-acre parcel for the county. So we recommended he's annex it to one of the cities so that he could sell his home off.
There would be partial access or some access to Robert's existing subdivision to those homes, but right now they're all accessible through Lofer Canyon.
I have a very rough draft of that if you want to see it. Want to see it?
I've got it here too.
No, I mean a very rough draft.
Oh, another one?
Is that the access right there he's talking about?
Yes.
So this future 11-700 would go over to Summit Drive?
The future which?
11, it says future 11-700 south.
That's on the Kelly's Corner plant that the county has right now. And it just shows here, future 11-700 south. That, I don't believe, that's, that's no longer there, that address. I don't believe that. This is an old plant. So that, that street is, it's one of.
No, I see where it's at now, this is.
That's Robinson's.
Yeah, this is Robinson's. Yeah, this is all changed because they didn't want to type, bring that road all the way through. I don't know why that's even drawn in there.
Well, that was planted 30 years ago.
Yeah. I've got a real rough draft of what we want to do if you want to see it.
Okay, yeah, sure.
So all of it, but that one lot that Noel sits on is the one they want to annex, huh? This one right here on the corner? I think that one is.
No, that won't be.
Well, that won't be.
So this one?
One belongs to Noel, the other belongs to Corey. One belongs to Corey and the other belongs to Robert and the other belongs to Griffiths.
So I would absolutely love to have Woodland Hills collect their property taxes. Is there any reason why we would say no?
No, not to my knowledge.
Somebody make a motion.
Turn and approve it before Elk Ridge hears about it?
Yes.
Really rough here. It includes, this is Noel Hyatt's property right here. Okay, the property here, right here is Noel Hyatt's house, Corey Hyatt's home, Mike Griffiths, and my property, Nadine Robbins' home right here. This is Elk Ridge, I own this piece and this is county and I own this piece and then Nadine Robbins right here and then mine is county. What I had proposed in the past was that we do tie this into Elk Ridge with a cul-de-sac that comes up dead ends right here. It'd be similar to this. So it'd come up and dead end, that'd give Nadine Robbins access to it, to Elk Ridge and then we'd annex one lot here on the front and here. So this'll all go into Elk Ridge and this'll all come into Woodland Hills. And then I proposed a couple of drawings for the subdivision in there. This is the existing winter way that comes over in cul-de-sacs and this here is, I think we call it Spring Lake Drive. We come up here and then out and then come back in up here on Summer Breeze. This, there's a home being built here on these two lots now. Yes, there's a home being built here on these two lots now.
It needs, it's here.
Yes.
Right now, she just has like a dirt road up to her house, I think.
She has a gravel road coming up my property to her front, and she has one coming up the back to her house also. She wanted to go into Elk Ridge at the time, was doing this back in 2006, but now she wants to stay in the Woodland Hills, like she just loves you guys. But she wants to stay in the Woodland Hills area rather than going into Elk Ridge, so I don't know what's going to happen there now. But she says she doesn't, she's not ready for change now, she doesn't want to really do anything. So that's why we did not include her in the annexation. Right.
So that's just one, make you all aware that's in the works.
So is this
If they could annex it in and leave Noel out, he would like to do that. He, he would rather stay in the county for right now, but I don't know if you can do that, you're going to be bringing in 15 acres, and you have property on both sides that stays in the county. He agreed to go with it when I first, first drew it up, then he kind of decided not to, but then he came back to me the other day and said, well, if I got to go in to do it, that's okay.
Okay.
I think he's concerned about the zoning that, with what that workshop he has there and everything else, I think he's concerned about Woodland Hills not letting him do that.
Oh, I think Woodland Hills would let him do that, we've already tentatively in, in our future plan, zoned a lot of that 11 200 as a possible commercial, right?
Yeah. I, I would think something can be worked out with it.
Grandfathering, man.
Yeah.
That's what I told him, but I didn't know for sure, so.
Yeah, well.
Better, we don't want him to move, he does a lot of the work for us.
Yeah.
The, the situation is, is when he built a building there, it's on five acres that he owned, and then he bought the parcel that Cory has, and he built a building that went on to both properties. And so now he can't divide it off, so he just wants to sell Cory, or just sold Cory, he deeded to Cory and sold it to him, a low, little parcel, rather than that, so it's not a legal lot really, because it's five in the, five acre zoning. And so, we're kind of in a situation, the only way to fix this is to probably bring it into the city and then work with it through the city zoning.
Yeah, do a property adjustment, property boundary adjustment.
The county zone has to be more than five acres?
It's five acres of lot zoning, yes.
Okay.
No.
And, and how much did he deed to it, an acre or?
I don't know exactly, I think there's really close to one and three quarters acre, maybe two. It's really close to that.
Yeah.
Yep. Okay. That was the last
So what, what is the process that we go through in order to, to do this? We need to have a hearing, or do we?
No, the city council really is the driver, uh, with it, with the county, because it's county property. Adjacent landowners are notified about it, uh, say Elk Ridge has expressed a little bit of concern about it, and one thing that would need to get worked out possibly is Lofer Canyon Road. Where would that go? Would that come to our city, would that stay? Because I believe that's Elk Ridge property there now, it's not county property if I, the road, if I'm understanding correctly.
The road's still county property, however, Elk Ridge says that they maintain it, or that they will be maintaining it. They're, they're in the process of approving, I don't know how many lots, but there's like 70 lots on the other side.
On the other side of it.
Yeah.
So, it may be to their advantage to maintain it, so that would have to be worked out. Yeah. So, then it's a matter of the county. But Robert, you've, you can probably shed more light on it than I can.
Well, I would, I would think if we went ahead and, uh, annexed it the way I was thinking in the very beginning, to keep the frontage of that part Elk Ridge, but where there's a high ridge there, and we're going to be accessing the roads from up above coming off of Woodland Hills, maybe the frontage goes into Elk Ridge, and then the top part of it stays into Woodland Hills.
The county's the one that ultimately gives approval on it.
Yes, they have to give the approval for it. I don't understand the new regulations they have now, before we just went over and annexed it, and I've never had anybody protest it, so I never worried about it. We just, between the city and the county, we always worked it out, we're just annexed in.
Yeah. And I don't know those, how
We, we submitted it to the county, they presented it to the city, and I've been working with Jody on that, and then it's gone on to a, a stage where it has to go out for public protest or public
Public comment, yeah.
comment for like 30 days or something like that, it's, it's done that now, I think, pretty close to it. And so, I don't know where we go next, I need to talk to Allison Black over at the, uh, over at the county to see what we need to go. They now have a separate office for this, which is really nice. She's on top of it pretty good, I just have not got a hold of her last couple of days.
Okay. But the city is not, is supportive of that, that effort, so.
I'd like to have been able to do that whole corner and got it all annexed in either some of Dale Grids and some here, but Nadine didn't want to go with it right now, and you got to respect that.
Yeah, yep. And I know there's property on the other side of 11 200 that the city is interested also in bringing its county property, that the city is interested in bringing it into Woodland Hills, should those individuals, uh, be interested in doing that.
You have two or three new homes there?
Yeah.
Pit?
Yeah.
Pit.
Yeah, the pit.
I think there's only that very corner that's still, well, I don't know, I, I know Rive Homes bought everything below it, north of there.
Yeah, on the other side. Is there anything else that we need to?
Home Builders Association sometimes has items that, uh, have, uh, an impact on Woodland Hills. Right now, there is a lot of debate about, uh, impact fees in a lot of communities in, in southern Utah County. Some of them going by up as, uh, 18% increases. And I, and, and we actually, in Woodland Hills, we have a couple of very high impact fees, for example, water, uh, but most of the rest of them we don't have because we don't have those services. And the state now has, has been involved in that also, so that you may look for the next six to 12 months, some, uh, decisions that will, will, uh, affect Woodland Hills, you just may want to be aware of that.
I know when you, um, left the city council, they had you continue to be the liaison for, for that.
Oh, Ali.
Yeah, I, I ju, just, and ma, maybe you're doing that, but if there's important issues that come up, you ought to let Jody know and get on their agenda, or write them an email or whatever.
Okay, let them.
To keep them, uh, apprised of, of those things, so. Okay. Very well, I'll accept a motion for adjournment.
I move to re-adjourn.
Our, our adjournment motion being
I was waiting for a second.
Did you need to make a motion on the annexation or not?
No. Let, let's, let's, let's do that, just
What was the motion? Support it?
Support the annexation. Yeah. I think that'd be a good idea.
I think, I, I think Lori wants to make that motion.
I would like to make a motion that we support the annexation of the three lots, three sections? How do I phrase that? Four sections?
Yeah. Okay.
I'll second that.
Lori's second, all in favor?
Just for your record, I think that's noted as a Kelly's annexation, isn't it?
It's called Kelly's Corner.
Kelly's Corner.
Most, but, but all of it, the Robinson home is not included in that, but that's the general designation that the county gave it
Thirty years ago.
A long time ago. So, we'll know, I'll, in fact, I'll make reference to that, so.
It's crazy, that quarter, it's actually inside of
That map that you gave us was signed in 1990. Those are the dates of the signatures.
Yeah, okay.
Do you remember, I even helped with that back then.
Pardon?
I even helped with that one back then.
So that means you've been around for at least 31 years.
Who seconded our, who, okay.
I did.
Back, okay, our dismissal.
Oh. Who, who seconded?
I seconded it.
Yeah, did, okay. All right, time is 8:20, I told you to get you out of here before 10. All in favor? Aye. Very good.
Say goodbye.
Oh, yeah.
Thanks, Lori, hope you're feeling better.
Thanks.
Oh, oh, good to see you.